I'd call this meeting the Timberville Town Council's orders September 9, 2021. Please stand and go into place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First thing we have, as we always do, is review of the minutes. Everyone will see them in their packet. If you have any questions, now's the time to ask. Any amendments, that sort of thing, something that might've got missed maybe, which I doubt. But, um, any, anything maybe needs to be added, changed, amended? And if not, I need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve.
Thank you, Debbie. So I have a second.
Oh, sir.
Thank you, Clarence. Uh, many for discussion. Now we'll go around the room, we'll start on this side, this side. Carl?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
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 Well, that's Chief vote.
It's not, you know.
Yeah, you can move. Um, treasure report. Everyone see a copy of all the funds we have along with the spreadsheets for the park and the sports complex? Just a little update, the sports complex, um, we had a budget of about $9,000. Looks like we're coming in about $62,000-ish. So, good job on, on the staff again, it's done well under budget. Uh, we did have a furnace to install to keep it warm so they don't have to winterize it every year. The lines put in and that's good to go. And what I'm asking Linda to do, I'll sit down with her next week, is we're gonna take, these spreadsheets serve their purpose, but now again, so commerce teams are so big, we're gonna put, take the monies that are left over, put on another, start a new one and, and start with the new project. Right now, what the codes have, um, in mind for these is the two things they talked about, along with the guttering on all the shelters down there, and we put a new roof on shelters down there. And that money, Phil and Tony did $75,000, so we have enough after, um, after doing that building that they paid for to take care of the roofs on the, um, free shelters down in the park. So, that worked out really well. So then, we really did very well with the money they donated. And we'll have to thank them again for donating that. Um, any questions on the treasure report or anything, uh, in financial, right, right now? Okay. Bills for payment? Everyone got a copy of your bills?
I have a question on number 32. I'm assuming that the ticket fee was separate from the air price? Because I hope we didn't pay $4,129 for 50 people.
No, it's separate.
It seems like they did that. But they rolled the same line.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's separate.
Questions on the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Thanks, Sharon, done a second.
I'll second.
Okay, for the discussion. Okay, Carl?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move right along. Uh, bills for payment. Recognition of previous council members. That's all I'm gonna want to hear. Where's she at? She's hiding in the corner. Good deal. I have AC. How's the AC doing?
So, as we did last time, we've kind of switched gears from trying to get things more professional and make sure we use the right, uh, documents and recognitions for the right purposes. So, again, we'll have this month a certificate of recognition. And it reads as, "On behalf of the citizens of Timberville, I am pleased to present this certificate to Anita Price in recognition of your 22 years of service as a town council member for the town of Timberville. We are fortunate to have dedicated residents and officials like yourself who care about and take pride in their community. On behalf of the citizens of Timberville, I commend you for the time you sacrifice and your willingness to work as part of a team committed to enhancing the quality of life in our town." And sign on here as well.
I'm getting straight cut, you're over there too. You can come on, come on in the middle here. Can you tell she's all down, she did right? Uh, it's a recognition. Chief, please report, sir. What you got for us tonight?
Uh, big news is, after, uh, struggling to get applicants for, uh, the open job opening we had, we finally ended up with a, a handful of good applicants. So, we made, uh, picking someone, challenging one for nothing, having some good options. And, uh, we ended up hiring, uh, a young man from Harrisburg Police Department. Name is Luke Kuzuski. And he started with us on the first of the month. And he's already up to speed out working by himself. And he, uh, has a, has not been a police officer long, but he has a, a great track record and a lot of experience in a short period of time. This Harrisburg is a busy, hopping place. And, uh, he's a volunteer rescue squad member, uh, down the road. So, he's a very community-minded person, and I think he's gonna be a great fit. Uh, we do have two events coming up and, uh, I have the actual dates. I'm sure Cecilia's already put part of them out on Facebook and we'll get, make sure she gets it out. But, uh, we have the Trunk or Tree event that the town is putting on on the 28th. And that should be at American Legion Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on, uh, October 28th. And the second one is Plankton Elementary School PTO. It is doing a similar event, they're doing that on the 24th at, uh, 1:30 p.m. So, we'll be, uh, helping participate with this one.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for your chief tomorrow's patient court? Is it 10 after?
It is not 10 after.
It's not 10 after? Yeah, why don't you do a public?
It's, it's pretty short.
Do a public remarks and then we'll come back around.
Um, just a few things to update council on. We've been working on a project down at the park is the boat, uh, boat, uh, boat launch, new, new kayak launch.
Kayak launch, yes.
Um, it was a rather long application, but it finally gets submitted, they sent back. We had a few issues with the submission, technical, technical issues with it. Um, but we got that straightened out, so I'm just waiting to hear back from them now to see if they come to a site visit, if we'll have to be with them, um, anything like that. Um, and then hopefully that'll be approved without too much issue and we can go ahead and start with that. That's gonna be the, uh, one of the components of the park approval program that was funded by, uh, Cargill.
Cargill, yeah, Cargill. Jeremy C. donated money for it.
I had put in the memo that went out about the, uh, about low fiber, uh, requesting a franchise agreement with the town. So, that's something that we have to have a public hearing on, I'm sure you'll point on that. So, we have to have a public hearing if council wants to consider low fiber, uh, granting low fiber a franchise agreement with the town. And basically, it's, it has to do with the, the right of way, being able to run the, uh, any kind of infrastructure in the right of ways. So, that's why you, that's the, the simple explanation, easy explanation for what a franchise agreement is for. Quentin may be able to go into more detail if needed to. But what I need to know is if council wants to entertain that idea and if so, we'll have to have a public hearing at next month's meeting. Basically, what it does, it allows another, um, internet service provider to come into the area and it's create a competition.
So, you have more than one choice.
Which is typically pretty good.
Typically, yes. I'm, I'm good with it. Do you need a vote or you just need a consensus?
I'd say consensus.
Yeah, consensus, because you can't vote, you have three, you have a public hearing. Carl, what do you think? Clarence?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, we'll, we'll get that set, uh, set up for next month's meeting and we'll have a public hearing at that.
Okay.
And then the final thing that I have, um, just a quick update on the demolition of the safer building. Spoke with the, a lot of the kind of transfers over the past three days. The contractor has finally talked to, finally was able to make contact with the building officials. And they discussed, um, the kind of officials that giving the, the green light. Um, the town has submitted the request for the demolition permit. Um, and so the camp, the contractor can go ahead and start working on the, uh, asbestos remediation. And then we'll get a date established as to when the actual demolition is going to start. And I have also talked to the property editor to keep her updated on, uh, the timeframe, so. And then this is what I have, unless anybody has any questions on anything that I've got.
And everyone see Chris's maintenance report? As well done as usual. Um, okay, hey Steve, why don't we open up, uh, go over a brief synopsis of the limit ordinance? Actually, limits, could, I can say limit ordinance.
Okay. So, we had a number of occurrences in town over the past year or so, um, of different dwellings having, um, an unusual number of inhabitants. And so, we, council kind of discussed it, we, um, I talked with the police department about it. They, they were kind of trying to enforce some different, um, items. And so, we went to the planning commission, planning commission started doing some research, looked at various ordinances from other localities, um, and finally settled on the ordinance that Winchester had in place. Tweaked it a little bit, um, we ran about the town attorney's office and, um, they made their comments, suggestions, and planning commission then sent it back to council with, um, in the form that you all have. And so, basically what it does, it puts restrictions on how many individuals can live in a residence based on the number of rooms, or number of bedrooms and the size of the rooms. We're getting some of the, there are different places, different locations around town where we have, uh, conditions that are becoming unsafe and unhealthy and unsanitary because the, um, dwellings are overcrowded. And we, we have some, um, regulations in our land development regulations that we've tried to address it with, but, um, sometimes it can be very hard to do that because of, uh, interpretation of familial status and relationships. So, what we're looking at with this is that this would give us a look of the town more teeth that we could go in and it's a, um, something we can actually look at and face the number of people. And you can count the number of people and look at how many rooms and measure the size of the rooms if we need to get into that point. Um, and that should give us enough, uh, authority to be able to correct these situations. And, and the main thing, the main reason for it is, um, it's, you know, we're not trying to displace people or anything like that. What we're trying to do is we're trying to protect, um, these individuals who are being crowded into these dwellings. Um, you know, they, they're working members of the community and, um, being, you know, contributing greatly to the community. And we don't want them to leave, we just want them to be able to reside here in a safe and healthy environment.
And, and what drove it the first time was a person who rented a home, then decided they would sub-rent and build partitions in the basement and just shove as many people as they can into rooms. And that's, that's not fair to these people and it's just, it's, it's, it's something that would help us protect, taking advantage of someone who doesn't, who shouldn't have been given that.
If I could, one of, one of the things that we did was contacted one of the big employers where some of these people work and notified the human resources department there because it's not just an overcrowding in a home issue, it's a larger issue than that. So, we wanted to make sure that they were aware of potentially these people being taken advantage of or refused, for lack of a better term. And this is just part of that.
It gives, it gives us some authority to remedy these situations which we didn't have before. Um, you got anything to add, um?
No, I think that the, um, ordinances as presented are very consistent with the code that we looked at. There's three sections of the code specifically. One, which relates to the town's ability to govern the health and safety of the inhabitants, it's consistent with that. The other is the Virginia Fair Housing Laws, it's consistent with that. And the third is the State Building Code and it's consistent with that. So, uh, I think it's right on.
Let me just call you Mark, so that's, yeah.
It happens more often than not.
Um, okay, so, council making the, the comment before we open up to the public. Okay. It's now, if anyone's here, like to make a comment, please stand up to the podium, introduce yourself, say where you live and now's time to comment if you'd like to. Yes, ma'am. Come on up to the podium.
If you can do me a favor, I've got to switch that mic off once there's a button on topic that just slides toward the public.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa Hammer and I live in 115 Brandy Smith. And I've noticed that we've had a overcrowding in our neighborhood. Um, we don't really know where our neighbors are. And we do switch, switch groups, like, every couple of months. There's a lot of arguing, there's a lot of fighting, we've seen some violence, domestic violence in the neighborhood, which is a concern for me. My children are afraid to go outside. Um, also, we've noticed that there's been a huge rodent issue. From one end to the other, all the units are getting a lot of mice. So, that's another issue that I wanna, remember, that's health. That's health is, you know, what are we gonna do? So, that, that does frighten me. Um, but also, I do appreciate the place having a lot. But, I mean, we, we want to get to know our neighbors and we want them to be families. But it doesn't seem like that's the case here.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the houses, but I do know there's one that's been discussed in that neighborhood that needs to be addressed. This, this should help us with that situation.
Yeah, there's been some, like, I've seen, my kids saw two of them, like, choking each other. So.
Yeah, that's definitely unnecessary.
Domestic violence for me is just, you know, I just want to bring that up.
Start with that.
You know, it's, it's okay. It happens, but this is just something that I want them to abide by rules that everybody else does in the neighborhood.
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
Well, this gives us, uh, this actually gives us some authority to actually do something, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kathy Roach and I live at, excuse me, 102 Brandy Smith. The place that, um, across the street. Um, we'll tell you that the one lady that, when she moved there, of course, we were all laughing, okay? And she came over for coffee and cake. And she was also, and I think it's, you guys don't even know. She informed me that if he wanted to sleep there and have a bed, it was $300 a, a month. Or if he wanted a chair, it was $150. I just wanted you to know that.
Same, I should've been talking about it.
Okay. Um, it might be their culture, okay? Uh, where they came from, um, we don't know. Maybe they slept on ground, you know, in a hut. And we have been told that, um, somebody missed out a lady at the back taking a bath. Now, I can see that, so I don't have the facts.
Right.
Um, but this also goes back to their culture, you know?
Oh, yeah, I, I can't, I can't speak for that, but like I said, this will give us, uh, something we can fall back on to actually do something.
We, we had another location in town where, um, the occupants of the dwelling would be charged extraordinary fees for monthly rent.
For, for the cubicle type.
Yeah. So, that, yeah, and, you know, you know, we were back, if you, um, talk about domestic violence, um, anytime you crowd too many people into a too small of a space, um, it's gonna be issues like, it can breed issues like that, so.
And it's true, you see them coming in with their bags and you see them go away with their bags. In town, especially on weekends. I think it's sad. I think everybody deserves a roof over their head. But I also think it's very sad and I think about the hatching. And it's, it's not safe. It's not safe.
I mean, and part of this is, is, is we're not trying to take any rights from someone. People live in a dignified manner and are treated dignified with the respect that is deserved, so.
And then, um, we have our maintenance with our air conditioning and heating with Mountain Valley. And I saw the guy over there and I was rushing over to see, hey, can you come and see ours, you know, before it gets really hot? And he told me, he said that, uh, he was there to do an estimate. And I said, an estimate? I said, okay, you know, and I, when he said, yes, there's one heating and cooling in the garage. And I heard that they were trying to make that into a paperwork also. I don't know if that happened, but that's what he just said. All right? Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Mr. Turner?
Hi, everybody. When we started building these, we worked with the town to, uh, create something that was attractive. Remember, you asked for us to break across, so it can work in our garage and, and that worked out well because, uh, there's a master bedroom, bedroom on the first floor, laundry and bathroom. And, uh, two bedrooms and a bathroom upstairs, so it works for handicapped people, old people with kids, or young people with kids and older people. And, uh, uh, it's a great community. And I think you all done a great job. I'm impressed. Especially the police officer, coming in with what he had to say and then hang it off, create the ordinance after review to help us out. And I think that the big thing is our safety and health issues. I just appreciate your orders.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Paula Bevan and as most of you know, I live at the corner of South Main, of South Main Street and Memorial Park Drive. For many years, we've discussed the truck, truck traffic on Memorial Park Drive and with the doctors.
Is, is this in relation to this occupancy?
No.
This is only a public comment on the occupancy, right? I'm sorry. We'll come, we'll come back to that in a little bit, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have, we have to get a vote, move on this and then we'll come back to that. Um, any other comments on occupancy? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Sarah Sotoli and I'm at 111 Brandy Smith Drive. And I appreciate everybody, you know, planning this out, figuring this out to help out these families in particular. I don't know about what's going on in the rest of the town of Timberville, I just know about my neighborhood. And I apologize if I haven't seen anything that you guys have experienced. My experience is I have talked to a few of these family members. They're very quiet, kind people. I talked to one the other night, I stood at his door and I talked to him for a little bit. Uh, I think the numbers of occupants have been exaggerated. Now, there may be overcrowding and that's possibly true, but I think the numbers have been exaggerated. I looked past this gentleman in his home, there's nothing on the walls, there's a couch, there's a couple of chairs. There's no evidence that I saw, at least in that immediate area, that there were 30, 40, 50 people living in this home. This was also addressed with our HOA and they just kind of dismissed it and were like, okay, well, we need help here, what's going on? And I just, I believe this ordinance is being put in place for their safety, for, for everybody's safety. Help, I understand that. Because nobody wants to share one bathroom with 40 people. That's disgusting. But as for the pest issue, there's a bunch of actors that could come into place that isn't necessarily, should be placed blame on any of the families that are living in these homes. There's an abandoned warehouse over here, there's a field that never gets mowed hardly ever unless we complain about it. You know? There's no telling what a guest is coming in, visiting other peoples in the neighborhood, what they're bringing in with them. So, that could be the cause of the roach problem, that could be the cause of the mice problem. I don't have roaches, I don't have mice, I haven't seen it. But I can't tell anybody else here that they're not experiencing this. This is just my experience and I'm only trying to look out for them because none of them are here. We are.
Yeah, this, like we mentioned, this is not intended to hurt anyone, it's just a potential to help people. As far as the mouse and the rodent, I guess, I don't know what that, you know, I don't have a reason, but this, this addresses overpopulation and.
We've had that issue with, um, a residence in town that we had to address that had one occupant in it and we had rats all over the place. So, yeah, it's, there, like you said, there could be many different factors.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
But we will, if the, if the ordinance is passed, if council passes the ordinance, then, um, that'd be part of the, um, investigative process will go out. We've actually done a little bit of observation, trying to figure out, you know, where the, the issues might be in town. So, um, we do have some of that information already. Um, but it will be an investigation into the, the different question areas that are in question, so.
I just, I, I felt like these families were being targeted and I didn't, I didn't like it. I didn't like it at all. And I'm only trying to look out for, I'm only trying to look out for them.
Yeah, they're welcome residents, um, and, and imagine if people get targeted. They're welcome, we love to have them here and, well, that or that's your. Okay, um, so I can quote public comment now? Anyone else have a public comment on this, on this item?
Can I? Please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, excuse me.
My name is Richard Griffin, we're at 104 Brandy Smith Drive. And we're right across from all this and it's being a little bit understated tonight because you've got six people living in the garage. They added that's own house on that street that has a basement. And the lady that owns the property told me that they were gonna put three bedrooms in the, in the basement. There's no restroom in the basement. There was a door that goes out, but there's no window. And from my understanding, that's against code.
It is, it's in this here too.
Okay. And the other thing is, you know, we have been told by one of the occupants there that there were 30 people living in there. And I've seen people going in and out of that place, lots of them come in, bring mattresses in, never see them leaving. So, I'm thinking that there's probably 40 people in your town living in this place. And as far as the rent and the cockroach problem, that's a direct result of putting your trash into your, uh, they bring trash can, they've got three. They don't have three for just a couple of people living there, they've got three, because they need three, they probably need five. And what they're doing is they're throwing the garbage in that brings trash can and they're not bad. Which invites the smell to come, there's birds, cockroaches and mice and rats or whatever, they're gonna be attracted to that. And the house directly down from 101, the man told us that he was killing 20 mice a day in his house. Uh, we've never had mice or cockroaches in our place, but there's a reason for mice and the cockroaches. They, they got food source, it smells and they're gonna go wherever they can fit, then. And like I said, there is a whole lot more people in this residence than you have any idea of because they work at different shifts, they're in and out at all times. Police officers could go over there one day and you'd see 10 people. He might run for the weekend, he'd be 34.
So, we got a poll.
This is, this is a serious thing.
As soon as, as soon as.
And it has nothing to do with race, it has nothing to do with that. It's a public safety issue all the way.
As soon as we're done here and we vote, we can.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? That's right. Yes ma'am.
I was hoping to say to her, she lives next door to, you know, and she's getting her first hand account.
Hello, hello, hey.
Hey.
How are you guys?
Give your name and where you live.
My name is Mimi Coier, I live on 103 Granny Smith Drive, on the second one, so they're right, I'm coming. Um, the, me and my husband and my kids live there, they have a mice problem, um, it's very, very bad at this point. We've lived in this unit for two years, going on two years, in November, um, we have never had bugs, period, no roaches, no nothing. Um, my husband has now caught twenty-five mice inside our house. And our home, um, he has pictures of all the mice, and he has caught them in sticky traps where he is taking, we're taking money and spending while in sticky traps, and all this extra stuff, we have now started to get, um, baby cockroaches in the house. We've never had problems with bugs, and all the places we've ever lived in. Um, we had, um, my husband is up over the road, a truck driver, so he is on at night, but coming home to deal with this mice issue is very, very bad. Um, especially with the feces and the droppings, I have two little kids, I have a two-year-old, puts things in her mouth all the time, I also have a four-year-old, a driving four-year-old son. And we now have mice, like, traps, you know, set up in the house because this is an issue. There is a lot of people living in this home next door, um, with my husband being a truck driver at night, when they're getting, I guess, off from pill rooms, you know, they'll become walking in and coming down through the basement of this house, and, you know, when they originally bought this house, they did a lot of work down in the basement, so they, most of the people, there's the stationary people, I think, was in the upstairs, as far as the older man and his mother and the other one, the rest of them are migrated down to basement, and it is nasty. We go outside, they are peeing out back, um, outside, night, they're peeing, I mean, it's, it's out of control at this point. Um, I was told also, I think, that my other, other side of my neighbor, she has also sold, I guess, to them, as, to them as well, maybe. Um, the problem need is, I'm not sure how for you to address this, we had an exterminator come the other day, um, he was, actually came from those people, because my husband is really on top of this, because we don't like this, and the man told us, um, that came the exterminator, and he's supposed to come back this Saturday, that they had about a thousand roaches crawling on all corners of the walls, the curses, that, that everything of the house, it's like ninety days in the home, um, compared to my house, and their house, of course, I understand, but the problem is out of control at this point, and, you know, I'd really like for someone to do something about it, it's becoming a real, real nuisance, besides the traffic of the people, all, all hours of the night, you know, um, to now, with bugs, bugs, there's a mattress outside, on the back porch, it is laying across the back porch, it is a box frame, that is now, and sitting out in the rain, eventually it will go back into the house, because that's what happens, they wash clothes outside, they leave the grass, and they go back in. Same way, they go up here, there's straw bogs, um, it's for donations, they fill up a grocery cart, um, I, we have pictures of this, and they took this stuff all they got to the house, and you don't, this house would sit out there for days, you don't know if it's-
Right.
Hit the streets, and then you're bringing it into the neighborhood. Um, you know, I understand what you're doing, but, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Uh, I'll make it. Uh, my name is Jared, and I live at 115 Granny Smith. I'd like to just reiterate my point made to you, it's very, um, the people that we're referring to, they're not families, in my opinion. A family is mom, dad, children, but these aren't families, these are just random people that are coming and going, you know, I sit in my garage and maybe have a cold beer after work, I see, you know, seven, eight, nine different people walking in and out, walking down the street. That's not a family, you know, I just wanted to make that.
I agree, I agree. And this limits adults, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a, it's a narrowly tailored ordinance focused on health and safety, and so the goal is, I mean, right now, it's, the, the police department and the zoning administrator have a limited ability to go into someone's home, right, and investigate what's going on, as they should, it's only, the only reason we're even coming up with this ordinance is because of the constant complaints. I think it's really important to say, hopefully most everyone has read the model ordinance, there is no crime or criminality that's laid out in here, all it does is give the zoning administrator the ability to investigate the situation, make sure that they're complying with the state code for building standards and for health and safety violations, and if they're not, seek a civil remedy for an injunction so that they have to follow the code of health and safety. That's what we're asking, we just want everyone to follow the baseline for health and safety, and so, you know, I know there's a lot of different factors that go into this, and I'm sure all those will be taken into consideration, I'm not saying this is a silver bullet that's gonna fix everything, it just gives us the ability to go in and start the investigation.
Okay, other comments, please. Uh, any comments from the council before we put this to vote? Carl.
I'd just like to say, this proposed ordinance, it's not about infringing on anyone's rights, it's about making things right.
Okay, that's what we're asking, yeah, I agree, that's what we're asking for. Okay, any other comment from the council? Thank you, Carl. Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Okay, thought I'd second.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Go around table, Carl.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Awesome, thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming, you can hang out and enjoy the rest of it, or it's up to you guys. Um, business and industry, anything for business and industry? Okay, parks and rap, we had, we had a parks and rap report, you guys know what the, the maintenance crew working on? Next month, we'll be able to tell you what money's left over, Miranda and I will be able to tell you what money's left over, we can talk about some new projects. Okay, finance, AC, the personal property tax relief percentage, it's my favorite part. You can hear it, I would have it down there, to a point like, me, after seventeen years. We got a pot of money years ago from this place, and as the town grows, you gotta divide it up on mortgage.
Because that company needs money first.
And the pot of money doesn't change, so as more people come, everyone else gets a little less relief, that's basically what it balances out for, so. So.
So, I give you thirty-three percent.
The chair made a motion for thirty-three percent.
Second.
I agree.
Okay, any further discussion? Go around, Carl.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
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 Tell we've done this for seventeen years.
Is that pretty bad, yeah?
Yes, we've got, must be drawn it right, and some people are starting to remember what it's for, you know?
He's got a topic, he's gonna say next one, he's gonna have to, yeah, this one fits with it, I thought. Personnel, chief maintenance are new employees, I guess at some point, AC, you're gonna get with Chris to put out a, um, what do you call it?
The name, Chris.
Add for that maintenance, for the, for the contract worker?
Contract worker, yes.
And whatever that is, you'll just have to let us know. Then we'll move down to the plane station, or museum.
We are still kind of managed by all the activities that they cancel for the rest of the year.
The rest of the year, okay. And, that leaves. There is, he's here. You use the mayor's, he's out.
So, you are, because I got it on the law for you.
Oh, great!
Yeah. Okay, on January 12th, 1912, the liberalist society held a meeting, the debate was, country schools should be abolished, the judges decided that they should be. That was in six quarters.
What, what? Say it again.
Oh, you can pull your mask off, it's right there.
Yeah, you're sixteen, oh, country school, oh, you're not, they had country.
Country schools should be abolished, and if you like, like the old country schools, like, you know, and the judges decided they should be abolished, and they were abolished, and that was nineteen twelve. Is that like a schoolhouse?
It was like a one-room, so.
A lot of games, bills, and schools like that, I'm assuming, for a meeting.
It was one room, and it was like six grades.
Right, 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 yeah. Well, if that was nineteen twelve, it took them a long time to abolish them all, but, yeah.
Government, government expands them.
All right, January 16th, 1903, a spilling of acid in the bluff school house, one mile south of Timberville. Now, if you go across the bluff, on the right end side, it's up on top of the bluff, it's a yellow house, it's just about, or the bluff school house, about. Saturday, February 9th, 1924, the Herschberg High School boys and girls played Timberville high school teams in the Timberville gymnasium. The Herschberg girls won eighteen to six, Timberville boys won twenty-eight to sixteen, and, uh, Timberville had the only school gym in Rockland County at that time, and it was added on in 1922, 23. We had, we had a gym before Greenwater, in the big cities. Now, the Timberville's famous cup bridge, which was built in 1884, lasted for fifty-four years, and the cement bridge, as we remember, lasted fifty-eight years. So according to those, our bridge now should last over the year 2051. That would be a hundred and fifty-five years, because it was redone in 1996, right before World Cup training.
That'd be eighty-nine.
Thursday, April 21st, 1921, the Breckinson School class gave a play in the school auditorium. The play was given to benefit the school for the purchase of additional playground. Now, I don't have anything to base it on, but I have a feeling it was across the road, there next to Agriculture Building, almost, almost up against your yard, almost, and it cost, probably, probably what that was. December, 1941, the town council decided to authorize a petition to be circulated to enlarge the corporate limits of the town of Timberville. February, 1934, Mr. C.D. Gibbs reported that the work on Main Street was going well, the town and the CWA helped, were working together, they widened the main street, and, you know, the bottom half street falls the road from the museum, right, beside the drugstore, that used to have a very big front porch on it, and I'm sure that, that when you widen the street, they don't get that, they tear it off, and now that the road's almost up against the building, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, does council have any other business before we open a public comment? Okay, Paul.
Well, I, sorry about all the good, I heard you say it's time for public comment, I'm not.
It's just a wrong vote.
I know, I know, and you were just before, but there was maybe, because this is a little different.
Okay.
Many years, we talked about the truck traffic on Memorial Park Drive, and when VDOT posted the no-truck sign, many of us thought that the truck staff and traffic would stop, but please believe me when I tell you that it's not stopped, and trucks on that road are all hours of the day and night, which can attest to that too. You can hear them early in the morning, and you can hear them after dark. Tonight, I want to ask you to please revisit the idea of posting a sign on 211 that instructs truss, truckers to turn left and not right, as their GPS instructs them to do. We talked about this a few years ago, and we learned that several, a judge cannot put a sign, the town cannot put a sign up telling the truckers not to do this and that for car damage and pillings, although the pillings have to do it. And when I talked to the management of both of those companies, they both were surprised that the town had never said anything to them, and I brought this back to you all, and I thought we were gonna have a meeting of the minds and try to do it. Please revisit it, and please get a sign made, they'll turn the trucks in the right direction, we've got the wonderful stopway out here, and it's much, much easier for it. We get too many near misses that are on that corner, but they're stopping now and backing up, and that's certainly not safe. But when you get in sports complex, some bigger kids over there, the more traffic we're gonna have on that road, we have hopefully kids walking to them.
Right.
Riding bicycles to them, or like we see now, some mothers out there with, with strollers pushing the kids, and you know the trucks cannot make those turns, that turn. So it's a serious problem to a lot of us, because we're right there, and we see it every day, but for those of you who think it's just a short street, and it's not a lot of residents, it could be any of your family or friends, because it could be on the road going over to the park. I don't want to see any accidents on that road. My second concern is a, not really a concern, I'm really grateful for all the things that have been done in the parks, because our maintenance crew has probably done a fantastic job. But once again, Monday, we went over and walked on the, the path, what do you call it, the, um, the walking path down the Long River, it's beautiful down there right now, and the river is so clear, it's so clear, but that one spot that I talked about a few months ago, still has not been finished, I noticed in the minutes that something is going to be addressed.
Which spot's that?
It's when you get towards the end, you go around the turn.
They were down there working on it today, Fred were out, but checking out, let's see if that sticks.
Okay, and if you're down there wondering, why don't you pave that trail, that path, instead of ground?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to talk about it, we don't have to do it yet.
So Fred and I walk over the plains on the, on the trail, the whole track behind the school, and it's really nice, because it's paved, and if anyone anymore wants, there are lots of them down there along the river, and around the whole field. But I helped out with the maintenance crew that we have, because they're very talented. But fix it up so that we can continue to write about it, okay?
And I don't remember all the things about the sign, please, you have to revisit that and see what we can do with the town, so.
I know we had checked before with VDOT about, you know, in the town, like you said, the town can't put a sign up, I'll check, what I'll do is I'll check with VDOT and see if, I don't know what VDOT, VDOT is kind of particular with signs in the right way, um, so, but I'll check with them, I'll definitely reach out and check with them and see if they can work with the, um, poultry facilities, so that the poultry facilities, if they're willing, we put up signs.
Well, they, when we talked before, like I said, it was a few years ago, they were really willing, and they were concerned as we were, and said, you know, I'm surprised we haven't heard from the town about this, and I thought at that time there was gonna be a meeting, the, the town and the two shops.
I don't remember, I don't remember ever, I mean, ever hearing anything about that scenario of them, the companies themselves put signs up. The only thing that we ever talked about before was if the town could put signs up directly, but that's when we had, we couldn't name, you know, specific facilities on there, but I don't remember ever hearing anything about, um, VDOT and the companies working together, where the companies would do it, so.
Well, the way I thought that it was allowed, and, and the reason I thought that you were gonna talk to them is, they wanted to hear from the town that there was a problem, not just from residents.
Well, they hear from us all the time, there's a problem, or, or there's, if, if, I wouldn't say a problem, but we hear from them that their trucks aren't allowed to commute, they hear from us about that. Well, we'll bring it up and see if they'll do anything about.
But I still think that this line would really put me, because, except we can't get the GPS check.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing to do with GPS.
Yeah, we've exhausted, yeah, we've exhausted all the possibility of that.
No, we should've gotten that one.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Okay, um, any other public comment? Just visiting?
Just visiting, yeah, expecting.
Okay, did you get sworn in?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, then, anything else? And he is adjourned, thank y'all.